All right, we're gonna get started.
Okay. Can we, um, we are, it's, it's 10:34 in the county. So let's get started. Just so you know, most of us did not have dinner. So they're probably going to be eating while you're talking, but we will still pay attention. So, okay.
Um, so dinner theater it is. Great.
Do you want to start this?
Yeah. Um, yeah. Joel, anyway, do I just go in?
Okay.
All right. Okay. So, um, it's great to see everybody here so early. We were a little worried we were gonna see you at midnight, so we're actually glad that you're here now.
Early. You may still see us at midnight.
Oh. I walked right into that one. Okay. Um, so what we understand, our, our sort of role here tonight is, is to walk through the findings from our needs analysis process, um, very high level and briefly, obviously, given the, the time that we have with you, and then to also talk through the vision process, some updates on what's been happening, and then, um, to talk about the, the calendar. So that's what we're planning to do.
And board members, I just gave you a copy of the Phase One report. You also have, have it in your inbox from previous emails, and then I believe you already have another copy of this as well, so.
Okay. So, um, yes, so you may have multiple copies of it and have read it already. Um, I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna walk through the, the sort of the challenges we identified first, and then some of the enablers, and then talk a little bit about some of the recommendations that we made. Um, if you have questions at any particular juncture, feel free to ask and interrupt. If there's any questions that people know ahead of time that you would like to focus on, you could let me know now, so that I can sort of make sure to pause on those pieces. So first of all, is there anything that anybody sort of has a question already that they want to, to throw out?
There was a term that you used, I can't remember. Learning.
Learning journey?
Yeah, learning journey.
Yeah.
So I wanted to know more about that.
Okay, great. So I'll make sure to, to, to talk about that some more. All right. Okay. So, um, I may be some, repeating some things that, that some of you know already, but, the intention of this process was really to, to do some listening in the district and in the community, to sort of hear a little bit about, um, what people were hoping would happen with the vision process, the kinds of things they thought might get in the way of that process, um, all to sort of inform how the process is designed. So that was the, the intent of the work. And as part of that work, we spoke with around 160 people altogether. Um, so that was a combination of students, families, teachers, principals, other side administrators, people out in the community, um, so as many people as we could reach, uh, in the time that we had. So sort of about 160 people that we sort of tried to get some broad representation.
And you can see the list on page 11 of your report.
Thank you. Um, so I think to just go through the, the challenges first of all, and I, I will preface this by saying that we don't anticipate that anything that we are gonna share with you will come as shocking news to anybody here. We think you'll probably know all these things. I, I think one of the things we would hope from this is that the things, if the things that we heard resonate, it's important to realize that they resonated across a broad variety of people, and that in itself is a helpful thing for us as we think about the visioning process. So what are the sort of broadly held concerns? What are the broadly held thoughts about resources for the district? That kind of thing. So I don't think there'll be anything in here that's gonna be a big shock to anybody, but if there is, please let me know. Um, okay. So we had a lot of concern about authentic community engagement. We have heard from multiple people that Portland people really like process, um, but have been perhaps scarred by experiences where the process doesn't close. It doesn't seem to end in action or doesn't seem to go anywhere. So there's a lot of input and then not much closure. So we've sort of realized that there's a, um, there's a desire for very authentic process and something that will have some follow-through. Um, and at some level, this seems like common sense, but it's also, um, it's not unusual to have lots of process that doesn't close. That's not, um, it's not specific to Portland that that would happen. So for us, that's something to make sure that, um, I might actually put in some of the, interweave some of the recommendations with this a little bit, but for, for us, this was, um, a sort of reminder to make sure that we're very careful, or, you know, in the visioning process, very careful to share with people what's gonna happen with the information that they, the inputs that they put in, um, to be very transparent about how the process is gonna work and to track the process along the way and make that visible, um, to the public in a variety of ways. And we're talking with the communications team to think about that. Uh, we also heard a lot of ambivalence about change. So, you know, obviously, ambivalence and dilemmas are really interesting things, right? Because they're like you, you're sort of driving with the brake on. So it's, it's, you know, people are putting energy in but not really getting anywhere. Um, and I will say that all of the challenges that we identified, we would say are very much historically driven. So there's a lot of history that people are still living very strongly and bringing with them into these conversations. So there's a, we heard a strong desire for change and transformation. There was a lot of interest in that, a lot of excitement around that. Um, some of it was born from people saying, you know, we've kind of hit rock bottom, things can only go, get better, but other people really leaning in and sort of being excited about the opportunity to do something new. Um, and at the same time, there's a feeling, um, and I think particularly within the district rather than from the community as such, that there's been a lot of turmoil in the last few years, a lot of unwanted changes or changes that have brought a lot of uncertainty. So there's a kind of desire for change and transformation and a sort of ambivalence about what that might bring. So again, I think for us, you know, being very clear about tracking the process and showing where the, the small movements and the progress and the wins are along the way will be really helpful with that. And again, you know, signaling what's happening so that people can see there's change happening, but it's hopefully not too painful. So we've called, we've called the further challenge, like I said, a lot of these are historically driven. So we've called this the Shadow of History. We heard a few people reference, jokingly reference something they called PPSD. So this sense of, um, trauma that people carry within the district from, from a lot of things that have happened. So, um, you know, historical, historical things, um, and including things like the, the water, um, the lead in the water issue, the, um, uh, you know, the, the coach who was kept on, um, and, and the way that the public has regarded the district. So this kind of ties into some of the media coverage as well. So there's a kind of sense that people are carrying that with them, and I think one of the things for us that when we think about this is, um, when we think about trauma generally, it sort of makes people more sensitive to, um, to something being, something else happening. So there's almost like an expectation of the bad thing happening again, and a way in which, um, the body or the organism or the organization is ready to react more quickly. Um, so we think this is possibly something that could be, um, symptomatic within the district, that there might be a sort of readiness to react to things very quickly. So we wanna be very careful about that, and again, we think, um, really good, clear communication and very transparent process will help with that. But we also want to sort of signal it because we think we should expect that to happen at some point. So we need to be ready for it. Um, it's not necessarily something we might avoid, but it's something that we can, we can prepare for. Um, again, we ask people about expectations for the future. We want to take people into the, the future of the district, and we sort of use the device of thinking about the, the, the children who just started first grade this week. Um, in the year 2030, they will be the senior class. So we sort of, we like to anchor our work. I know, right? My point.
Whoa.
It is, it is startling sometimes to think about that. Um, so it sort of helps to anchor ourselves in, in this work instead of having sort of, you know, vague futures. We've got specific futures and specific people. And I will sort of say that means, that doesn't mean that we're going to ignore everything that happens between now and 2030. It's not like that suddenly everything just kind of comes alive then and everybody who's at school before that tough. That's not what it means. Things will start to change pretty rapidly as soon as you make plans for what you want to be true in the future. Um, but we asked people about what their expectations and what they really wished for for students in the future. And predominantly, the answers, um, were not dramatic. People had pretty sort of modest and understandable expectations for what they wanted for their students. Um, but we noted there was a lot of emphasis on what we would call social emotional learning goals. So a lot of ways in which people wanted students to feel confident, to feel empowered, to have a sense of agency, um, to, I think, you know, most people have recognized that although there's some clear career paths potentially for students in the future, there's also a sense that we're going to, students are gonna graduate into a world in which all kinds of different things are gonna happen. So, so that sort of language of resilience and preparedness and empowerment was, was very much, um, a big piece of this.
Can I?
Yes.
Do you wanna get all your presentation done and then?
No, please.
Okay. So I was wondering if that was on a certain page in here, 'cause that's, people have modest expectations, and I have a question on that. Is that, is that a summary of a larger problem?
That's a summary of a larger, yeah.
So, this is like a framing question. Um, so if people have modest expectations and we as leaders, um, based on research, know what kids are gonna need in order to be successful based on the future, um, environment, is there, will this process, um, get us closer to what it, I guess, I don't think I'd outcalibrate the question. It's like, I guess if we said like, well, people want modest, but like, we think they should get there, like, how do we sort of marry that to bridge that? Because that seems essential, because I think a lot of people's, um, expectation may be based on their own personal experience, which for most parents, I mean, even parents older, it's, you know, 20 years out of date.
Yeah.
Or 30, 40, or 50.
Yeah, exactly. So this is the kind of, the irony of education, right? Is that those of us, parents and educators, are thinking about our own history, which can be multiple decades back, at the same time, we're sort of, um, creating the future with, with young people. Um, so for us, part of, one of the, um, pieces that helps with that, will answer your question, uh, 'cause it's the learning journeys. So one of the things that really helps is, you know, as you say, people draw on their own experience. So one of the things we like to do with the learning journeys is show people things happening elsewhere, whether that's a physical visit or a virtual visit, to things that might seem quite edgy but are actually being already played with somewhere. Um, so that's a way, it kind of gives people a sense of inspiration, but it also shows people that some things are actually happening. So it's not like, oh, that's not, that's so blue sky, we couldn't do it. Oh, here's people just like us doing this. And that is a very powerful experience for people, um, just to kind of, to see that. And then we can also take that a little further, 'cause we can have, you know, as we debrief those journeys together, then we'll start asking questions like, so this is happening now, where would you like to see that go in five years' time? So it's a way of sort of, um, you know, to your question, sort of bridging that gap, sort of taking people through steps and stages to get to some, some other ideas. Um, and all the time, making sure that there are actually things that feel relevant and meaningful, you know, not just, you know, crazy. But, yeah, that's part of the process, is to show people that inspiration. Yeah. Um, so, um, I'm just gonna go quickly through the last two here. One of them is, I think, one that everybody's very familiar with, sort of shifting from that culture of autonomy. We heard from a lot of people that schools have been very autonomous, um, and there were some reasons, you know, people felt maybe in the past the schools hadn't been as supported by the central office, or the supports weren't clear, so schools had needs must kind of developed their own autonomy. Um, now, I will say that we, we don't know yet how, you know, what's the truth of that, but the sort of, the, the, one of the reasonings given was that the schools hadn't got the supports to be, um, part of a larger whole. So I think one of the things that you will be thinking about as we do the vision project process is that you need this to be shared, right? This needs to be shared accountability, it needs to be a shared narrative, it needs to be a shared project. It can't just belong to a few people, it's gotta belong, it's gotta be pervasive throughout the district. So that's gonna be a shift that is gonna have to happen, I think, just to kind of prefigure some of, um, some of the sort of thinking about how the whole system shifts. But just that cultural shift between a sense of, a strong sense of autonomy. And I think, you know, I think we, we understand that there's something in the, the DNA of Portland as well that, that sort of is very, um, attached to that, um, and, and for good reason. And it's not something that shouldn't be here. Um, but how do we sort of, so how do we sort of create that narrative that we can do a project together whilst also being sort of individuals and unique? So, um, so that's something that we'll see, you know, might, might begin to, um, to, to be a bit of a block. And then the final piece was really the, the media and the social media spotlight. That seemed to be, um, I think there was a recognition that, um, there were some genuine issues in the district that have caused that in the past, but that, that, um, that social media piece particularly had taken on a life of its own. And I think for us, one of the concerns we have is that in a project, when you're thinking about the future, you're basically doing innovation type work, you're doing things that you might have to do some experiments, you might have to try things out, you might have to go to places and then decide they're not the right things. So there's gonna have to be a little bit of failing forward in this process, and if people are feeling that they can't do that because they're gonna be called out on social media, that is definitely an issue that we will need to think about, because we want people to feel, um, confident to try things out as part of this process.
So it's fair to say people have been risk averse to be innovative in their practices?
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So, I should check my time a little bit. So, uh, in terms of some of the enablers that we heard from people, we think there's definitely a sense of willingness and optimism here. You know, the people, we heard, obviously, people who've come along to meet with us, you know, there's a bit of self-selection there, right? They agree to come in the summer and come and talk with us, but, um, but we heard a lot of willingness and optimism to lean in, to try things out, to participate. So I think that's a huge advantage. I mean, it's, we, you know, it's something that we really don't want to underestimate. That's a really big thing. Um, we know there's gonna be skepticism, cynicism, because that's normal for people to have anywhere, um, but we always kind of, you know, will say, bring your skepticism, but leave your cynicism at home. And we sort of feel that there's a lot of people that we have encountered already who will be able to do that, so that is good. Um, so the other piece around resources, I think, might be a little more contentious, but, um, the per pupil funding here is not super high, but it's relatively high compared to some other districts. So we did, we look, we've got some sort of comparators in the, um, in the body of the report, which I won't go into right now, but I think one of the things we'd like to sort of think about is, is to think, think about those more deeply and sort of really dig into those numbers and see whether that's actually the case. Um, and then we also heard a lot from people when we asked about sort of bright spots in the district, the All Hands Raised Parent Equity Fund was something that people mentioned again and again as something that was very positive. Um, and then in terms of other resources, just the general community support for public education here is also a huge resource that you can draw upon. Uh, it's not true of all districts, so that's something that's very, very positive. Um, the other piece, really, the other two pieces that came out as enablers, one is the previous work done on equity. So people felt that, um, that was a strong foundation. I think there was a recognition amongst a number of people that the work could go further now that it was time to really sort of move from, um, some of the important foundational work into really taking action. So, so there's a kind of, um, perhaps even a, a pent-up desire to do more of that. Um, and then finally, people also mentioned, um, what they called the new board, having, referencing boards in the past that had been, um, perhaps dysfunctional, and they felt more positive about the current board. So I don't wanna make anybody blush in the room, but. So, um, I think a couple of opportunities we identified is really, you know, again, although we've said that community desire for authentic, um, engagement is a, a potential challenge because there's been some bruising in the past, um, the opportunity to get it right, um, you know, not like perfect, but right or more right, um, this time round will be, I think, very, very powerful for the district. Um, and then it also seems, and I know probably everybody in this room knows more about this than we do, but it seems like some of the, um, the strategies from the Portland, the Portland Plan and the city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan, there's some language in there around thriving youth, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of detail when we dig into that. So there seems to be a huge opportunity for the district to, to really sort of lead that path. So, great. Um, so I think some of the recommendations that we had mentioned already, um, you know, really making sure that, there's a lot of, um, concern that this process won't be transparent, so making the process as transparent as we can and really making different options for people to engage. And we'll talk through some of those when we kind of talk through some of the details of the process, um, so that we, you know, are, um, being sensitive to the fact that people might be working multiple jobs or have different native languages, um, so that sort of taking part in certain kinds of meetings might not work, or taking part at a certain time of day might not work. So how do we design a, a number of different avenues for people to give genuine input to this process? Um, and then we will be doing some community meetings as well, so we will wanna be working with, um, the board and the core team to really think about how to do those most effectively. Um, and then tracking the process, uh, the leadership of the district, the board and the leadership signaling that this is an important process because, you know, people are very sensitive and we're, are always looking for signals from the top. So, um, it's gonna be really important that that's clear from this group of people. Um, and then I think, as we mentioned before, that, that sort of, to address those expectations, to see what's possible elsewhere, to sort of look, to hear some things about trends in education, um, trends elsewhere, trends in workforce, all of those things, but then also to go out and visit and see some things actually happening in the world will go a long way to helping people sort of think, um, perhaps even more boldly than, than they have done up till now, about what they might want to make happen. Um, and then, you know, building that shared vision, making sure that people have enough sense of input, um, and that it feels organic and authentic enough to them, that there is that shared sense to address some of the autonomy, potential autonomy issues. And then we know also that, uh, in terms of the social media piece and the media piece generally, um, there is some work being done already in the district to really sort of also, um, own its own narrative, uh, and not just let other people tell all the stories. So the final thing I just wanna mention is that we also, um, think it's really important that there's a kind of, again, so clear signaling and sponsoring from the board and the leadership, but also a sense of some distributed leadership here. So that's the, the core team, who is comprised of a group within the district, um, of a diverse group from different, from sort of the school site and the, um, uh, different departments within central office, who are gonna be the, the kind of worker bees of the work going forwards, making sort of facilitating the design process going forward. And then, um, a mixture, a larger group called the Guiding Coalition, which will be a combination of people within and outside of the district to really do some design work, um, together. So that's kind of our, a swift overview of, of our findings from the needs analysis. Sonia's gonna talk more about the process and what we've been doing so far and what we need from you, um, soon. But are there any questions or comments based on what I've just said? Did I, do you feel clearer about the learning journey piece now, or was that enough?
Thank you. Please. I think, um, that it's interesting that you mentioned about looking at other city documents in the central city plan and that they, there are some platitudes about the future and about young people in our community, but to think about using this process to catalyze more conversation externally as well as our work internally.
Yeah. It's a big opportunity to do that, yeah.
I mean, I think it's interesting that All Hands Raised, the Parent Equity Fund, is viewed as, as viewed as a positive, um, but it's not viewed as something that's like connected to us when in fact it's, it got created by PPS, um, and it's funded by essentially Portland parents. I mean, it's just an interesting sound, 'cause it sounds like in here, it's like some completely separate thing that.
No, no, no. Sorry. Yeah, it's just how it's. A bright spot in the district, uh, in the district's sort of recent history, so that's, so I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear.
No, I'm just saying the perception that that's, like, just how it's phrased, that it's a, something external to the, to the district. I mean, working within the district when it actually is, like, coming out of, like, our parent, our parent community.
Yeah.
I just wanna point out that, um, this document is, in an effort to be transparent, is on, uh, our webpage, our website. There's a, uh, communications probably speak to it, but, um, uh, there's a landing page where all of these documents and communications will live, uh, to make sure that folks, all folks have access to the information that is coming through, to the board and to the broader community.
So the idea being that they can track the progress as it's happening during this development, right?
Yeah.
Well, is there an opportunity for them to comment on it, or is it just a presentation?
So maybe that leads to the phase or the next step of the conversation.
I just.
There's your question about commenting on the report itself?
Well, I mean, now that it's up, is there an opportunity on the website to get feedback from people that look at it? Like questions?
The, the website doesn't have that feature to be able to, um, collect feedback necessarily, but we're gonna continue to talk about those opportunities in the community, and, um, and I think down the road, we could build an electronic way to capture that. Now, we just started the landing page to be able to kind of share out both internally and externally, like, here's what's started so far and here's what we're doing, but, um, I think we all have seen, you know, the processes that don't, don't work well are those that are hidden from those that.
Yeah. And I would say, so this, this report here, uh, was an effort to understand the kind of the current climate. Uh, so the, the next phase, the actual stakeholder engagement process, will involve the broader community to comment on the work that lies ahead, um, as it pertains to the vision, right? And actually outlining the vision, uh, on behalf of the school system.
And then, the other question I had is, since it's on the website, is there any planned media around it? Have you guys sent out a press release or?
We haven't done, um, we will do, we will do, uh, a lot of media around it, but at this point, we haven't done anything externally. We want to be given a chance to kind of walk everybody internally through it and you guys as well, and then absolutely, David Roy will be working on that to vision plan. And especially when we're out there, if we're gonna be getting that feedback, it'll be the, I think, prime opportunities in the coming out with what we're doing about it of interest.
All right.
Well, I mean, I could just comment that I think, like, getting it out there and stuff too is, like, I think, just coming from a student perspective as well, is like, I mean, 'cause you talked about the whole PPSD sort of thing, I mean, I've kind of been aware of that, and I think even just having students know, I mean, this is later on stages, but just having students know that, like, change is coming and like, there's like a brighter future and like, you know, things are moving to a more positive freeway, that, I think that already creates, like, a better mindset about the district as well moving forward. So.
Hopefully, that'll happen.
Yeah.
You know, and I would highlight the fact that, you know, with this leadership's commitment to student-centered decision-making.
Right.
Right? The vision will have a big, uh, emphasis on making sure that students are not only, you know, that they're participating in the process.
Correct.
In a number of ways, right?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not just impacting you, you're actually helping create it.
Definitely.
So that's what we'll rely heavily on you and.
Yeah.
The Super Sack to, to help, and other, you know, student leaders across the district.
Right.
To really help us elevate that conversation.
Yeah. No, students, students wanna make this district better. I mean, every, I mean, everyone does, but I think people are really motivated, motivated especially now to go in the right direction.
Right. Yeah. So, good to know.
Right? So if there's any more questions, I can switch over to sort of giving you a quick
update on what we've accomplished so far, and then invite you to play as, um, an involved role in this, and we can talk a little bit more about, um, some of the things that we're thinking about in that area. So, um, I think it was two weeks ago tonight that, if I'm not wrong, that, um, the approval to move forward with this work was accomplished. And so roughly about 10 days, um, I think we've done a lot. It's been a lot. And so, um, the core team that Fiona had, um, referenced earlier, um, has been pulled together and we've kicked off the core team meeting, and really, um, you know, our sort of philosophy around going slow to go fast, so really pulling that team together and getting really clear with each other on, why are you, why are we pulling you together? What's the purpose of your work? What's your role? Um, we'll start to get clear. So we're continuing, like, every meeting, right, we'll have more and more clarity. And but also just talking through some initial roles and responsibilities, how are we gonna communicate, how are we gonna coordinate, what's the infrastructure of our work, you know, um, how are we gonna collaborate on documents? So a lot of detail, um, that gets covered in a kickoff that, um, we. So a lot of detail that gets covered in a kickoff that we find is very, very, very helpful operationally, so that you don't run into the issues of like, well, where are we going to store these documents and how are we going to make comments on it? We sort of talk through these really upfronts that we can really hit the ground running with this team. So we kicked, this is called the chartering process, so we did the charter of the core team. And then in addition to that, I think in the last, you know, few days, we've also, very important, I know everybody's saying, well, when are things going to happen? When are the guiding coalitions that you're talking about, when are community meetings going to happen? And we know that all of this, you know, the vision really should dovetail with the strategic planning process and really also be in alignment with the budgeting process so that, you know, the vision can inform, the strategic plan can also inform your budget. So we've got some constraints on the other end. So we also worked with the core team to do some backward mapping and you can see some artifacts on the wall here around us anchoring some things and then looking through all sorts of calendar constraints like four-day weekends and should we have a guiding coalition on the weekend, should it be on a weekday, and really getting their initial input on that. And so I'm going to walk you through this in a second, but I just want to highlight that we have a first sort of slap of a, as a, as a proposed calendar up here. And we would like to invite you to give us some feedback and also just some insight as to if there's anything that raises red, yellow flags to you about this potential calendar going forward.
If I may, just to kind of take a step back to make sure that everybody understands the core team, again, the core team, the list of the core team is available on the website on the landing page, so you can see who, who is participating on that. But I do want to highlight that in conversation with Chair at the Board, Scott Bailey, Director Bailey sits on the core team and at a higher level conversation, the Chair and the Superintendent are both the executive sponsors of the, of the core team. So to just, again, core team executive sponsors are Chair Moore and Superintendent. Director Bailey sits on the committee, or the committee as a representative of the Board. And then again, we have a diversity of folks from mostly central office or all central office, looking at a variety of lenses for the work, so.
So is it fair to describe the core team really as a smaller group involved in the planning process, but that there's a broader representation, more active participation in the guiding coalition, which is where the conversations around content, interaction and ideas is really intended to germinate from?
Right. So we, you know, you mentioned we are the work, this is the worker bee kind of team. I mean, literally it's, you know, did we get, I mean, it's, it's kind of thinking through the skeleton of what the process is going to look like, the designing of it, but the actual visioning process or work, the meat of the actual process is done, you know, in community through the guiding coalition, which we'll talk about in a bit, and then the broader community and all the stakeholder engagement things that, again, we'll talk about during the, the calendar. But again, I just want to make an emphasis that the core team is really the nuts and bolts of the design aspect of it and is not making any vision decisions.
The design of the process. So how do we go about designing that process that'll engage the broader community in the visioning process? And really boots on the ground too, so, you know, everything from finding the venue and making the logistical sort of decisions around, you know, everything from materials to meals to everything. So we have a sort of a nimble team of about 13, 12, 13 people to do that. And also support coordination across other departments. So whether it's Director Moore playing a liaison role with the rest of you as board members to not only just keep you informed, but to involve you in, in some of the design decisions that we're going to make, to other members representing other departments within the district, them going back to their own departments and engaging them as well. So there's that accordion effect happening in this process.
Sorry, Deidre, I thought you were done. So I have a concern. It seems like the full board is sort of a trailing participant when we're the executive sponsors of the overall project. And so the way that you just described that, it seems like we're like a stakeholder group over here versus the elected leaders of the district. And I'm interested in sort of the role of the guiding coalition, but it's described as a group of up to 70. And if we've decided that as a board that our work is going to be done outside of a committee process and we're as a full board, my expectation is that we would be directly engaged in the, in the process and not just you're going to show up when 70 other people are in, in the room and part of the discussion. So, you know, to date, I think we, it, the information has been sort of trailing of, like this happened, this happened by the way, and now we're going to do this. And I think it's important as executive sponsors for us as the full board to be individually engaged or, you know, asked how we want to be engaged in the process versus this is a, this specific role and is, you know, the same role as, you know, one of the other 70 people?
Right. I think, I mean, we should definitely try to close that gap, I think, that you're describing experiencing. We've definitely been working with Chair Moore on the, sort of the front end. I think we even have weekly meetings set up right now, so that we're actually getting a lot of input from you and perspective from you before we even take things to the core team. So in the sense that we've got, and I, and I see the difference between that and your point of like all, everybody having an opportunity to say, this is the role I want to play.
Yeah. I mean, I want to see, you know, all the documents, this going into how we're going to structure the vision process. I mean, if this, if this is like our most important work project, to have just episodic, like dipping our toes in the process, I think it's not very authentic.
Well, I think the, the thinking right now is the guiding coalition could have three members of the board on it is the number we're thinking about. But in addition to that, I think your involvement in every design decision prior to the guiding coalition is where we're actually seeking your involvement. So not sort of dipping your toes in those sessions, although you could also be part of those as well as the community sessions, but we actually need your, your, your involvement prior to that, like while we're, before we make the decision about how to design those things. So I'd say...
Sorry, did you, do you mean that like even on the guiding coalition, there's the full board's not going to be on that?
No, I don't think that's the thinking right now.
I mean, we can, we can reconsider it. I mean, there's, we're bumping up against some, some numbers. Guiding coalition, and, and I'm, this is sort of received wisdom, the guiding coalition has to be big enough to be representative, but not so big that it's unyielding and unworkable. So we've already kind of expanded the size of the guiding coalition and we could, you know, we can rethink all of that.
So how many people are on the guiding coalition?
Says like up to 70.
70.
Yeah, I think with, with some, I think we've, we're stretching it to about 90 because I think in conversations we're realizing that some other stakeholders really need to be involved at that level.
And how many times would they meet?
Three times in the guiding coalition sessions. So the commitments we will ask of guiding coalition members would be attendance at three guiding coalitions, which we're thinking right now are Friday night, Friday late afternoon through evening and then all day Saturday. We're asking every guiding coalition member to participate in a learning journey, whether it's physical, so we'll have two physical learning journey opportunities as well as a virtual one. So if they can't go somewhere and they don't have the time, they're scheduled to do that, there'll always be the opportunity to participate in the virtual one. We ask them to participate in at least one, either facilitate, in your cases, potentially host or co-host an actual community session. And again, those are still to be designed in terms of where and who and how those come about. And then I think there might be one more commitment. So there's the, oh, and then the final, we're calling it the installation. It's a word we're using, if you can imagine something like an art installation. So something that is up, present, interactive, but also can be done, you know, asynchronously. So if you think about an art installation, you go and you interact with it in your own time. So we're going to have an installation at the end that has, it's an opportunity, the final sort of opportunity for the larger public to come and give some input, feedback and reactions to what's coming together in terms of the vision materials. And we would ask every guiding coalition member to, to take part in that in some way. Again, TBD in terms of their, in terms of their particular role.
I think it's a huge miss not to engage the full board. I mean, I, I'll just speak for myself personally, it's like, we're the executive sponsors, elected leaders of the board, and we're not all involved in the work. I mean, I, I would even like the guiding coalition as, you know, not as substance, but you recommend, you're saying that that wouldn't even include the full board. So, I mean, I think that needs to be, in my opinion, needs to be rethought how you engage the board because if this is our major work this fall, we all should be involved in it. And I would think that the vision is going to then drive our budget, our policy decisions, you know, how we do our work is, you want board members not just to have buy-in, but ownership of it. And you do that by participating fully in the process versus getting, you know, written reports.
That's something, one of the things that we've done in the core meeting is start to, the core group is start to identify attention points. And that was the first thing that I brought up is we have, we, the board has to own this. And we may hear things from the community that don't exactly correspond with our own personal vision and, and we have to, you know, how are we going to navigate that?
See, this, and you're, that's the most important thing because I think it's not like where the community agrees with us, but where the community is someplace different and to challenge our preconceived notions about what we think is the vision. But if we're, if we're not at that table, we're not going to get that challenge, otherwise we're going to just go with our framework. I think this is like what we need, and I think you're exactly right. But I don't, I think if you're not engaged in it, it's awfully hard to understand where there's a disconnect.
What's this all about? This sounds crazy to me.
Right. And then you go back into your pattern of...
Sonia, can you talk about, or Jonathan, talk about how the touchpoints like in these work sessions will occur? I don't know if they're mapped out on the calendar or not, but I would imagine if, if the whole board isn't in the core team, obviously that's a lot of hours, but how often are these sorts of check-ins and updates and opportunities for feedback? That might give you a better sense of how often the engagement and involvement will be with the full board?
Right. So one of the conversations...
So can I rephrase that slightly to say what's being proposed as...
Yeah, exactly. That's what I wanted to raise it now because I have a pretty significant concern up to date how things...
Sure. And so one of the conversations that Director Bailey and Chair Moore that we've had, I think as part of, and the broader community, core team have had, is that Director Bailey would have a significant role of engaging his colleagues, you know, on a weekly basis with what's coming out of the core team, right? So again, the core team is drafting, so as an example, and we'll get into this in a little bit, but the guiding coalition, there's a running list, right, of folks that, just folks that just been including and adding in there. None of that is final, right? And so that needs to be presented to the board, that needs to be presented to the leadership, and ultimately those conversations are being studied.
Core team or is it the guiding coalition?
The core team is, is drafting the guiding, the list of the guiding coalition.
Like will the board have something to say about that? I guess, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So I guess what I'm looking for is like a much more detailed, how is the board, like going forward, going to be fully engaged because we haven't been to date?
Sure, yes.
So, yeah, so I think the structure right now that we're thinking about is at least the weekly, if not more often, check-ins with the Chair, but also just getting your input about what needs to happen in the next week and how the, the board needs to be engaged as well as in the core team. And, you know, Director Bailey is on the core team, so just the according out of involving decision-making or inputs to the design back to the core team happens in that according style. So we're not making decisions, we're saying, okay, here are the questions we need to get input from. And an involvement of all sorts of stakeholders in, and we've got, you know, we've got Director Bailey in this case, reaching out to colleagues to do that. We've been at this for literally five days. So we now have plans to say, we've got something up here, but we'd like the board to look at this and give us some insights as to what we've potentially missed on this calendar, what we're not thinking about, what are, not only just dates that might be in conflict, but what about this flow is not making sense? So this is an opportunity to do that here, but if we don't have board studies, work sessions, it will happen through Director Bailey and Chair Moore's irregular interactions with you.
Well, what's the, what's the venue for those regular interactions? I mean, you, it sounded like you said that Scott's, Director Bailey's responsibility is to report to the rest of the board on a weekly basis. Is that individually or as a group? Because I could see as a group, it would generate a lot more discussion, we'd be bouncing stuff off each other, whereas individual phone calls, it doesn't seem like the best way to do it.
And that's, that's something we should talk about tonight because I'll just, I've experienced that, hey, can you give me feedback on this? And then it turns out somebody else has thrown out an idea that I might agree with, but I never heard that idea.
Right. Where's the synergy?
And that idea fell away instead of coming back to the whole group. And so it's going to be really important for, you know, there'll be times when we will be together and have a work session or even a board update. Maybe, maybe that's a different way we can do it is a regular short discussion at board meetings might be, and me coming and saying, hey, we've had this issue come up in the design. And again, this is, there's the designing and running the process and there's the content of the vision. And what I would be bringing to you is the design of the process piece to make sure we're going in, in the right direction to get your input. So coming to you with the key questions, and again, that is more valuable than as a group in a public setting, of course. And there may be times when, hey, we've got a, something just came up, the board meeting's two weeks away, where I can do individual phone calls and then do a summary back to you, you know, so that we have some backing, that's transparent how...
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like...
I think you're bringing up really good points is what I'm saying. So let's, let's wrestle with this and figure out the best way to do this.
It sounds like it's more of a work session topic. I don't know how we would be able to constructively have a dialogue like this in the board setting, so that's one thing. And it seems like we should, since we have a work session every other week, should be, you know, a standing, one option is to have this, a standing part of that meeting, a significant part of the meeting, not just a half hour, but provide enough time for people to get into the details.
Yeah. And I think we can vary that depending on, there, there might be some 15 minutes and there might be some of the whole meeting.
Well, the only reason that I think more is better than less is one of the things that you pointed out in the report is that we have a really aggressive timeline. And so that's going to create tension and pressure for you to communicate to the rest of the board. So it's going to be a challenge.
Sure.
I just want to, I think it's worth giving a cautionary note. I mean, a lot, I mean, we've had two whole meetings of the core team. Who remembers? Not many. And, and it's been, I mean, it's a lot of detail. I mean, this is very, very hands-on, legitimate... I mean, this is very, very hands-on logistical, you know, we need venues, so, you know, come on by your friends and relatives and see if there's a hall somewhere, you know. I'm not sure it would be the best use of board's time just to have, you know, a kind of standing, you know, every, every week or every other week, prolonged update on a lot of logistics.
Well, it should be the substance, not the logistics.
But right now, the substance is the logistics.
But the substance is going to change.
But design informs the result and the content. So, it is important at a, at a high level. And I guess now I'm even more concerned when, if, like, you don't have board members part of the guiding coalition, I'm just like, so, we're going to host a, you know, town hall meeting in our zone? I think you're not going to, that's inadequate, so...
So, exaltate the positive, here's what I want.
Right, so I want more engagement. I don't want to be surprised about things at the backend. I want to hear what people in the community have to say because I want, when I have a mistaken impression, to hear what the community says so that I can have ownership at the end of the process. And so, I don't care about being involved in the venues, but the design of the process, like, who's going to be on the guiding, on the guiding coalition? I definitely think the full board should be engaged in that process.
That's part of the plan.
Yes.
Okay, absolutely. I guess I, what do I, what do I want? I'd like to see what that looks like because it, it's not, it's not described, so that's, that's what I'd like to see.
I mean, it seems like, almost like a work plan. What's the work plan for the thing we're doing this process?
So, I think maybe the way to proceed right now is to do the calendar to see, here's, here's the first step at a draft of how this is going to unfold, and that, and we can have reactions to that, and that's good. And we can say, okay, as, as we, as we go along, here's where I want to be, here's how I want to engage. So, you know, one, one place to engage is the guiding coalition. Key content area, key area to hear from, from others in the community is second way, and again, not, A and B is, you know, I don't know, 30 or 40 or however many smaller meetings we have, some of those might be a big tent meeting, some of those might be a target, small targeted focus group for a particular constituency, your engagement in those, I think as much as possible. Again, if I were, if I were not on the core team, I would be wanting to attend as many of those as possible to hear what others in the community are saying.
Exactly, so I think, to be productive, maybe it's, it's like mapping out what that looks like.
Yep.
And so, and then getting feedback from the board on what that is.
And that's kind of where we're, that's what we're setting to do, is the calendar is explaining the process. So, I hope by doing that, it gives...
Well, and the calendar will give you a sense of the cadence of when sort of certain milestones will happen, certain events will happen, but I think preceding that as the design of the next session is coming about, that's when we need your involvement in giving us insight as to, you know, what would you like to see in those designs, what's problematic about the design that's forming, those would precede sort of each event or milestone.
And I think to the point of Director Rosen is having both Chair Moore as executive sponsor and Director Bailey there on a weekly basis on the core team, I think we are in the conversation to, as we're having ongoing conversations around the design, Director Bailey is pointing out, this is a decision that the board as a whole needs to make, right? And so, as an example, with the selection of, or the ultimate selection of the guiding coalition, you know, Director Bailey has assured, you know, that the core team, that the guiding coalition would be reviewed, endorsed, ultimately endorsed by the, by the Board of Education, right? And so, so you'll see that entire list, you'll help craft that list, right? But again, the venue conversation is probably nothing, is something that doesn't, I mean, it might concern the board or individual members of the board, but not as a whole. And so, at that point, you know, that's not a conversation that you're going to bring up, raise to the board.
So, maybe one of the things is, you have agendas for your core team meeting, share those with the board, and if somebody sees something on there that they're interested in and has a question about, that they can touch base with somebody on the core team.
That would be great.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, I think, you know, the more, the better. It's like, you can't over, at least for me, you can't over-communicate.
Sure. Just in agreement with you.
Close off.
Old, old history here, but in 2000, we had this big strategic planning process with a couple hundred people in the community involved. We crafted this strategic plan that was really uplifting. The board was, well, that's interesting.
Yeah, well, they weren't involved in it.
Yeah, and, and so, I'm...
Which strategic plan?
The 2001.
2000.
The one that is in the instructions, the strategies?
Oh, no, it did.
It's the one that no one...
18 years ago.
I probably have it somewhere.
Is the one that, no, I, the committee that I co-facilitated, I've got the detailed stuff there, that, oh my God, there is a huge group that did great stuff on closing the achievement gap. I don't know where the work is. I thought it'd save a lot of, it's like, oh, God, really? Perhaps. And then the fact that we can't find the frigging thing in the files is speechless.
Okay, this is PTSD in action.
But, this is now.
Note to self, board needs to be involved.
Yeah, so I think, I think what I'm hearing is, you know, one, we'll have to make sure to work very closely with Director Bailey at every core meeting and every conversation with, that's happening around this, to determine the right transparent strategy for engaging the broader board. And so, one immediate action that we're going to take is the agenda for the core team will be shared with the broader team, the board, as a, as a placeholder for any potential questions that you can bring up to Director Bailey to then raise to the, to the broader coalition, or committee.
And let me, for example, you came up today, we were talking about the job description for guiding coalition members, and the topic came up about, are you into social justice? Is that, is that sort of in the job description, you need to be, that needs to be in the value set? And do we want that in there or not? Because that's, for some people, that's a loaded term, that we might want their participation even though they don't...
Social justice.
Yeah, so, I mean, I mean, that's, that's a politically loaded term.
Well, depending who's helping to develop the vision, you're going to get a different vision, right? So, if you want some baseline of shared guiding principles and values for the people that are helping to develop it.
Right, and that's, the point I brought up is, this district does not have a core set of values, and it's been, it's dogged us for years. And that's, as a board, we need to figure out, are we going to do, develop that set of values as part of this process? Is that something that we need to draft now and then get feedback out of this process? How are we going to tackle it? So, that's one, it just popped up today that I want to bring back, and we need to have some time to shoot that over. So, yeah, let's get engaged, let's own this. It's exciting.
Great, so it is 11:32. We said we're going to be here for an hour, so we have three more minutes. But I also want to make sure that we go over the calendar as a...
I think it's important to walk out of here with some...
Yeah.
Kind of questions.
I just have one little question. So, just for the student perspective, where is that going to be, like, located in this, per se?
So, definitely, I think we should have a cohort of students as part of the guiding coalition.
Okay, so that's going to be...
So, definitely, there. And then potentially, when we think about what the community meetings might be like, you know, is there an opportunity to do a full student one, you know, just for students?
Right.
That might be facilitated by students as well? Or, you know, those things are to be for us to all determine?
TBD.
Yeah.
And, you know, going again to the calendar, there is, I think, I think it's...
Oh, I didn't even notice.
There's something in December, isn't there something in December that there's a student...
I don't think we knew what the date was, so we didn't put it up here.
There's a student, like, leadership conference that you're hosting?
Yeah.
So, we want to kind of think about, yeah, so we want to kind of think about, how do we use that venue?
Tell me what the date was, because it might fit very well, but it happened right around...
Yeah, it's early December.
Yeah.
And the other thing is if we have a big tent event to have students join us in terms of if they're small group facilitation, if some have done it by students.
And I do have to say, the whole student-run, like, meeting as well, that's always going to do sometimes too, because you might get perspectives that might be hidden or, like, closed off if, like, other adults are present, which is like, you kind of want that too, so.
Yeah.
I think all of that is very important.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I just want to share this with you, I want to anchor, anchor you on a couple things, and then we can go out, because I think it's good to locate. So, we're talking about these guiding coalitions, and so, right now, you'll see a guiding coalition one is proposed to be here, October 19th and 20th, guiding coalition two here this first weekend in December, and guiding coalition three over here in February. And when we were doing this exercise, even with the core team, we were like, wait a minute, like, why is everything so far away? And are we, why are we not doing anything until I show her? And as we started to backward map ourselves into what needs to get done between now and then, we realized our narrative actually turned to, wow, this is pretty aggressive, are we going to have enough time to get all this done? So, in thinking about, and of course, we also considered, you know, three-day weekends or four-day weekends, probably not a good opportunity to pick that weekend as a Friday, Saturday event, so we avoided those kinds of things. We also took into account things like the statewide in-service for teachers and other things, so that we wanted to avoid any other constraints that would necessarily take out stakeholders from being able to participate. So, there are things like that in there. So, if you see, if you see guiding coalition one here, one of the things we thought was really important is that whoever gets invited have about a month to be able to, the invitations go out about a month ahead of time, so that, one, they've got a chance to respond, and two, if the answer is no, that we've got some backup nominees that will go and try to fill the slots for. So, we need about a month from here. So, you see, these are sort of, these triangular purple post-its are sort of milestones. So, we're thinking invitation goes out here, that means, you know, lists gets tweaked and finalized and comes to the board, et cetera, all during this. So, and then the Board of Education, so we're backing up here to say, well, nominations then need to be in by the end of this week, so we can start that vetting process with the leadership and the board. And so, Director Bailey will be in touch with all of you, I think, in terms of what process we're getting that done, so.
So, that's like Thursday, Friday, literally?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and we're going to be asked, and they're going to be, the final decision's going to be made on the 11th?
Well, and final, then the final decision is sort of coincidental when the invitations go out, but that sort of final list for consideration that's been vetted through different groups will be pulled together here, so there's about a week for the superintendent and the board chair to kind of look at that final list and vet with you and work with others to make that final decision. We think they need about a week to do that before the invitations go out. So, you can see, like, even though this is all the way over here in October, that, actually, it's a pretty aggressive timeline, all the way backing up to this Friday to get some nominations from you all, as well as, I don't think the leadership is going to ask the same questions. So, then after every guiding coalition, about two weeks after that, we're proposing that community sessions happen. So, just because there's one star doesn't mean it's one session, there's going to be multiple sessions. Sometimes it could be in general locations around the city, it could be a particular community-based organization, because they might have the pool to invite certain groups in their constituency to come. It might be at a school-level site, so, you know, one way that we can get multiple, potentially teachers to give input is to actually take this out to sites. We might take advantage of things like conference time, back-to-school night, to also get input from school sites where parents are naturally coming. So, we're looking at all sorts of different ways to sort of, you know, answer this question of, like, how do we get community input, really trying to ask ourselves, how do we get maximum voice and where do we go to get that? Not necessarily just say, well, let's just do it in the whole blocks of the city. So, we're going to, we're going to be thinking through that and also asking for your insights as well.
And we also want to have some kind of online aspect to that as well, so there's ways for people to just give input that way.
Yeah, so we say online, digital, in-person, asynchronous, synchronous, right? So, because some people may not, you know, the, the time that we've got for a community meeting might not be the time that's good for them to give that input, so we also have to give them a synchronous opportunity. So, roughly after every guiding coalition, you'll see these community meetings, community sessions set up. And then the learning journeys, we are planning to have them occur between guiding coalition one and guiding coalition two, so that's another reason why there's a little bit of a stretch in time. We want to have, you know, two different physical opportunities, going to two different locations geographically, and then somewhere in here, obviously, the virtual one doesn't necessarily need to be timed, they can, you know, it'll be set up so that anybody can do it at any time during a certain window.
And you'd like to provide just a quick description of kind of examples of learning journeys that we have put on the table as potential spaces to go? So, you know, there's a big interest, you know, that we, we've heard from folks about social-emotional, right? So, what schools or school communities are looking at social-emotional supports, who's being innovative around that effort? Or, you know, when we think about blended learning or personalized learning, you know, what, what school communities are looking at that? And what's exciting, I think, around the virtual one is, what would it look like for us to follow virtually a student through their school experience? Or, you know, so again, being very creative, offering new, new viewpoints of public education elsewhere, both locally and across the country.
So, those are some of the ideas that have been floated, and again, part of the design process to, is to make some decisions about that and involve you along the way. So, learning, so guiding coalition one happens, learning journeys happen between them, community sessions to get, not only to inform them of what's been happening, but also to get some meaningful feedback on the work that's coming out of each guiding coalition, is what's happening in these community sessions.
So, on the community sessions, say, there's an early, say that button at the bottom there. So, you've had the guiding coalition meet, you have community meetings there, then you have another guiding coalition meeting, and then you have these community meetings. Are you going back to the same groups or...
That's a great question. Do you think we should?
Well, I mean, I think things are going to evolve, and it's...
Yeah, some consistency would be great, right? Because we might also learn, we might also learn from this that we missed an opportunity, so we could add that here and stuff like that.
One, what might happen is, if you meet with a group early on, they give you their point of view or something, and then they'll get circled back to, and things have changed a lot, and they're like, wait, you told us that you were going to do X, and like, now it's completely different. Or maybe, maybe there's a mechanism that you bring new groups in, but that there's a continuous feedback was to the, whoever the groups were, of like, how things evolve to the next step so that they don't feel that they missed a whole bunch of things.
Right, absolutely.
And I think the website's going to be a, a piece of that as well, to show people work in progress, and, you know, we can have the commentary part as well, that's another, you know, or whatever the online channel is, that's another way of getting that.
I mean, I would try and do push-outs, because, let's go over to our website.
Yeah.
So, so two things, and just my personal response to your meeting. A couple of years ago, we mapped out a process like this, and we came up with, and we shortened it down to 40 different meetings, community meetings, in terms of kind of covering, trying to cover everybody. And, and I looked at the 40 and went, oh, boy, now it's got a couple more. And some of those, again, were big, come... And some of those, again, were big, come one, come all, and some of those were very targeted. So, to say, well, go back to, I don't think we have the capacity to go back, but communication is the key to this whole thing being successful. And so, thank you for participating, wants you to know what else we're hearing, and a month later say, here's more that we're hearing. How's, how's that compare with what your input? We have to keep that information flow going. And there's, we're gonna be really creative and really go after the communication piece. It's so late, I can't even think anymore.
Okay, can I just mention one thing, though? I would hazard a guess that there are, with the exception of, what, four people? There isn't anybody in this room who has probably experienced a visioning process, and I would go even so far as to say, I suspect the rest of us have never even experienced really any kind of process that's been effective in PPS. So I think we need to be a little careful about trying to apply stuff that we have known to this, when we have people here who do this for a living. So, I mean, I just, just a cautionary note, I think we need to be careful not to be so prescriptive, that we don't take advantage of the expertise that we have brought on board.
I was thinking the same thing.
So, anyway. It's now thirteen minutes to twelve. So, can I make a suggestion? Can we leave these up for a while?
Yeah, we can leave them here. If board members have, if they wanna look at it more closely, provide feedback, again, this is all still super draft mode, you know, provide feedback directly to our project lead, Stephanie, our chief of staff, or myself, or Director Bailey as your conduit for the core team, so, yes.
Okay, so, so let's leave these up, and then, you know, let people take a look at it, and then over the next, however long...
And can I suggest that we break this up into two pieces? So if this sparks some thoughts about the design, that's kind of one set of thoughts that we would like to hear, but we're more urgently wanting to hear any red flags or yellow flags that come up for you as we look at some of these dates, 'cause it's really important for us to try to start to anchor these and start planning, getting the invitations out, and really transparently sharing that these are the dates that you can expect things to happen.
How about if we have somebody take pictures of it and send it out, and that way, people can go and give us a deadline of when you want any questions or comments back?
And then, in terms of the guiding coalition, again, you mentioned this, I just wanna reiterate, that Director Bailey will reach out to the board members, will share in depth kind of what the quote-unquote "job description" is, solicit input both on that and the who's on, what's the running list right now? And then again, we'll, over the next, course of the next week or so, really try to condense that to the appropriate number.
Yeah, so we would like, just to reiterate, we'd love to get board info on the guiding coalition nominations by the end of the week, 'cause I'm guessing that if we actually pressed each of you one right now, you'd have, you know, ten, twenty people in mind that you think should be on it. So if we could do that by the end of the week, that would be great.
Maybe calendar issues by the end of the week also.
By the end of the week as well? So, just to be clear, are we waiting for Scott to ask us, or is somebody gonna send us? I mean, it seems like, we all, I'm sure we all should come up with a bunch of people, but like, it'd be great to have, like, here's the criteria of the job description or whatever, before we send...
Yeah, so we can get the draft job description to you right away, and I'll be calling you in the next couple of days. If you can take a call on Friday, let me know when works, or maybe I'll just send you an email and say, tell me a good time to call in the next couple of days, have your ideas, you know, for people who should be on this, and any feedback you have, and then... So I'll send you an email that goes through those points, here's, here's what we need right now. And again, you know, I look at stuff like this, I need a couple of days to process a lot of the time, so that'll, we'll get you the documents right away, and then, you know, your feedback anytime, but particularly names and date issues the next couple of days.
Sorry, sorry.
There's public comment.
Public comment, sorry.
Sorry, I know everyone's been here six hours, so why? My name, I'll be specific, my name is Noreen Huff. I'm a parent of an eighth grader here at PPS. I'm in a really privileged position, I get to arrange my work, my daycare, my transportation and life schedules to attend all of these meetings, and most parents do not have the kind of privilege that I have. I'm here today because while I support and understand the need for a strategic visioning process for the district to move forward, I am concerned that the process has already begun, but it lacks real transparency and stakeholder engagement. I understand that this is only a first step, however, I have significant concerns that this process engaged only those individuals chosen by senior leadership to answer questions that were developed collaboratively with the senior leadership team. This process took place in June and July, when parents, teachers, and students are hard to engage and hard to track down. It did not include the district's own family and community coordinators, it did not invite all the principals to participate, and it did not include many of the historically underserved groups that our community has. The process appears to have occurred over two days with a consulting firm that, based on this document, does not always understand the local context, politics, or PPS's history. The core team, as I looked it up tonight, includes only senior managers and director-level positions from this building, and does not include any individuals who work with students on a day-to-day basis. The first step of any strategic plan is to list all the stakeholders who'd be at the table, and this does not, this was not addressed in this visioning document at all. Fifteen percent of PPS students are special ed, the district's own special ed parent advisory community, SEPTAP, or SEPTAP, the special ed parent, PTA, were not invited to participate. And over the last week, I reached out to many individuals and community-level organizations, those who work directly with our historically underserved sped students, ELL students, and students of color, and I talked to many people, as well as Jamie Cale, the two of us, it was about five days reaching out, and we found nobody who participated in this process. And if the two of us can't find somebody, people who come here and show up regularly and testify in front of you, that's really concerning. Additionally, I'm concerned that this report says that the less-than-positive experiences tend to be historical. The language implies that these problems are in the past. That is not true. In the last ten months, this superintendent and this board of individuals have made many decisions without enough notice to the public, a lack of transparency as to why their decisions have been made, and the repeated mistake of not engaging stakeholders before they made those decisions. I know that our past grievances are bigger than that, but it is also the people in this room who are responsible for that. This has resulted in communities feeling targeted, and delays on quick decisions have to be reversed after a lot of protest. Without any work to address that historical and recent loss of trust, the ability to buy into this visioning process by your community is going to be limited. Before we all start looking at this design process, or the nine questions that are laid out in this, in this report, these are questions that were written after consulting only with handpicked individuals. I strongly encourage bringing everyone to the table to create a process that has greater transparency, that isn't just put up on a website, that, I look at this PPS website every day, I didn't even know there was a separate boarding page for it until I came to this meeting. This report lists authentic community engagement as a major challenge, and I'm here to say that communities are not being engaged. Communities who want to work with you, communities who volunteer to help their time at the district, who are working hard in our schools to support all our students, do not, do not know this process is happening. Visioning has to be intentional, it has to be public, and it has to be meaningful with all stakeholders present, because this top-down approach is not engaging those who have the privileges, like myself, to be here, much less those who are less privileged and don't have the opportunities for equity and participation. I would like this process to reach the students who need changes for a better education. I ask you to think about this process very deliberately before we rush through to get a document at the end. Sorry. Okay, I know, thank you. Okay. We're all at the 12:00 then, okay.